The invocation will be given by Saint James Cumberland Presbyterian Pastor Rod Dunn. The Pledge of Allegiance will be given by Commissioner Tim Mason. Pastor Dunn.
Well, Father, once again, as we approach you, we have to just pause for a moment and think about the magnitude of what these gentlemen are up to on a regular basis. It's not easy even dealing with your own situations, but they're trying to do for the good of the county and for the good of the city. For that reason, I ask that you bless them and strengthen them, and all their wisdom and all their planning. And I ask you to watch over each and every one that's even here today, that we might be able to receive something that's going to be good and beneficial for our hearts to take place and showcase in this world that we live in. Grateful for the place that we live here in county, in Bradley County, and for everything that you've done, how have you always watched over us and blessed us? So we thank you again for a blessing, thank you again for this thing to be decent and order, and ask for your presence to be here and help in every way, in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Laid allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Thank you. I'd like to have a motion for the approval of the minutes. Second for Commissioner Thompson. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you. A report from the county mayor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, everyone. Couple of things to report. First of all, your septic tank reports going well, two hundred and twenty-one properties are in process. There's been thirteen sewer hookups, eighty-two permits have been issued, seventy-three signed contracts, twenty-eight have been inspected and completed. We've allocated six hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars of the seven hundred and fifty. So we're getting close to deciding whether we want to add to or conclude it. Courthouse landscaping, I want to thank Tim Mason's crew. He's been helping us around the courthouse lately with some trimming and pruning and some overall cleanup. We appreciate that. Over the weekend, there's some pressure washing was done on the plaza and the front of the courthouse. KAB is the ones that provided that service. So we want to thank both of those. And then we've got some mulch that'll be coming, and hopefully Tim's crew will be able to spread some mulch for us between now and Memorial Day as we get ready for the holiday. Benefits, open enrollments are going on this week, so if you have any changes to your benefits, your payroll deductions and so forth that you need to get done, be sure and check the schedule because that's going on all this week for next year. At this time, I'd like to call on Chief Fairbanks, Fire Department's chief. He's got some great news to announce publicly, I guess, for the first time, talk about Bradley County Fire and Rescue. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. It is a privilege and an honor to be here today. We have been waiting on this for quite some time. I did put a packet in front of your microphones if you haven't reached and got those yet, if you'd like to look at that. We are here to announce today that we have completed our twenty twenty-two, twenty-three ISO audit. The last ISO audit was in twenty fourteen. It was very delayed due to the COVID restrictions that were placed upon everyone. So we started in the fall with the auditors from ISO, and we were able to get it complete. It went through all the proper chains in our company, in ISO's company, and has been stamped and approved. And as of August the first of twenty twenty-three, it will go into effect that Bradley County Fire Department in Bradley County is now going to be an ISO rating of three from a four, which is super. And that's much in part to this commission, just as much as it is to the Fire Department. And it helps the Bradley County residents lower their insurance for the insurance companies that participate in the ISO rating. I have already sent a copy of this to some of our insurance friends that do participate in ISO, and they are very excited that they're going to be able to lower the rates for the people in Bradley County that participate with those companies that use the ISO rating. One in particular insurance company I sent it to called back and talked to me, and he says, you all have done an exemplary job. You have lowered the number by changing the minimum that I can see nine things in your fire department. So Jeff Stewart, several of the lieutenants and commanders worked hard on this. This ISO audit was a department-wide project. It's a lot of moving parts. You've got your emergency communications, your fire department, your water supply. So much stuff goes into the factors of getting your score for ISO. So we have worked diligently, even to the point where our guys are going out and do the fire hydrant testing because sometimes a water company doesn't get to it fast enough or can't do it due to manpower. And we send our crews out in those districts, and we test those fire hydrants ourselves and inspect them and try to keep our scores up. I have twenty-fourteens, a copy of twenty-fourteens ISO rating on this side, and of course, the new one. And when you go down and look at all the numbers, we scored much better in all areas, especially communications and fire department operations. So we're proud of our nine-one-one board for helping us. We're proud of our firemen for doing a great job, and this commission for allowing us to be able to be funded to do those things. So thank you very much. And I'll take questions from anybody if they got it, or answer anything in your packet if you need some help.
Commissioner, please.
Thank you real quick. How long does this ISO new rating? And by the way, congratulations, good job. How long does this go?
They're supposed to be, we're supposed to be audited every five years.
So this rating should be good for five years?
Yes, sir.
And so we were at the last one for five years, so it's a five-year increment?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Hughes?
Chief Fairbanks, this actually shows to your leadership of the Fire Department how well it's doing. I am a true believer that it starts from the top down. So congratulations with that. Also, Mr. Chairman, I'd love this ISO audit to be added to the minutes also.
So moved.
Hopefully.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Commissioner. No, it's within that five miles. The way I'm reading the report, it's within the five miles. No, it goes to a ten if you're outside the five, to my understanding from ISO. The White Oak area, there's not a lot of houses there and stuff, but along that White Oak Ridge, I think that it stayed at ten. They didn't put a map in here. We have the map, I think, accessible to us, but anything out of that five miles is going to be ten. By opening up Prospect, McDonald, and Taylor helped tremendously. And then an automatic aid with Polk County Fire. We help them, they help us on an automatic aid, meaning within so many miles inside their county line and so many miles inside our county line. We were able to accomplish and get that three for those folks also on that Polk County border because we help each other out. So we've lowered that number of residents that would be in that ten. So that answer your question? Yes.
If I could add to that, don't get confused with our five-mile radius before when we were talking about. This is a five-mile radius from all of those stations, and it leaves very few people that. But if you're more than five miles, there is, you could possibly have a ten, but it's very few people. But before, you know, we talked about a circle around the city of Cleveland, that five-mile radius. It's not that, it's five miles from the station. So adding those other stations, which if you recall, we went with not a battalion at two or three stations, but we've got people there twenty-four-seven, which gives us a first response. So it's spread it much bigger. So it's almost all of Bradley County, I think it's safe to say. I often say we're one of the very, very, very few counties that have a full-time paid fire department for the entire county, no matter where you live. Now, we're one of the very few that have Class Three. City of Cleveland was Class Three for many, many years. Recently went to a two, I believe, which is great, and I congratulate them. But for a fire department this new to be a Class Three is sort of unreal. And on the insurance, if you're a company that uses ISO, yes, it's a tremendous savings on insurance. But forget the insurance savings, just for a department to be a Class Three, that tells you how good the department is. So the citizens, if they're on one of those very big companies that don't use the ISO, they still know they have a very good fire department that's coming to fight their fire, even though their company may not use ISO. You follow me? It's a good way of grading a department. So it's great news. Who would have ever thought when we first started how many years ago? Not been that many.
If you look on page six of your papers I gave you, it actually breaks down countrywide the fire departments and what classes the fire departments hold. And out of the Class Three, there's only three thousand five hundred and eighty-three.
That's the whole country.
Out of a whole lot more than that, but we're in the three percent.
But we did it in a relative few short years, is my point. So it's a good way of knowing what kind of a fire department you have. And again, go to any of the other surrounding counties, and you will not find it, I promise you. At any class, you won't find a full-time fire department, especially not a Class Three. So I congratulate Chief Fairbanks and Jeff, Assistant Chief, they've all, I think Assistant Chief really worked on this. One of the other things that's really improved since the last one is the water supply, too. Anytime we're providing water supply outside the city, that's helping us. And so we have a much better water supply than we had when we first started. And we always require them or request them to put in hydrants, and they do. So that has helped us tremendously. So a good department, good equipment, good fire department, we already have pretty good nine-one-one to back it up, but that's part of the testing also is nine-one-one. So nine-one-one, water supply in the department and the equipment. We're blessed in Bradley County in many ways, and fire protection is one of those many ways. That's all I have unless you have something else.
Commissioner Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for your hard work. This has been a real challenge for you. What, and I'm interested in what savings the taxpayers will have. What?
That'll be up to their insurance company.
What do you anticipate? Is there a dollar amount?
I have not talked to the insurance companies about what one point means. Maybe we can have Shelter Insurance or Cleveland Insurance or somebody like that come in and tell you that. I will try to find that answer out, but I do not know what that savings will be. I just know there will be a savings.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Sean. Appreciate it.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Consent agenda. Can I have a? All right, we've got first and a second. Any discussion, anything you want to need pull or anything? Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Alford?
Yes.
Kra?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater? Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
It's twelve in favor and none opposed, and two absent.
Thank you very much. Reports from committees and our districts. We start on the left, Commissioner Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Make it brief today. I want to congratulate all the graduates that graduated high school. I remember nineteen eighty-one when I graduated, forty-two years ago, and want to wish all the mothers a Happy Mother's Day. Of course, I lost my mother in seventeen, and I know she's rejoicing in heaven. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Chairman. Everything's well in the sixth district. I do have a quick T.DOT litter grant report. For the month of April, we covered four hundred and twenty-nine county road miles, one hundred and sixty-six state road miles, and seventy-eight city road miles for a total of twelve thousand four hundred and forty pounds of litter. And as always, I'd like to say thanks to Missy Harrison and Thomas Bell, they're my right and my left hand. When I'm doing environmental stuff in court and stuff, they're rolling things right along for all of us in our districts and stuff. So I want to say a big thank you to them. That's all I have, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Slater, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Education Committee met last Tuesday. We reviewed the, the school systems budget, which I believe you'll hear more about in the meeting today. We also talked briefly about the capacity study that is being done at all of the schools in the county school system. And that study is, I believe, Dr. Cash is supposed to be finished sometime in June. And then we will have a formal discussion about what the data shows us from the capacity study. I'd like to recognize an individual today that is serving as the Director of Schools for today. So Nolan, if you'll come up to the podium. So if you'll introduce us, tell us what you're, pull the microphone down. Yeah, there you go. I've known Nolan ever since he was born, and he's a fine young man, and he's going to tell us a little bit about himself. So go ahead, Nolan, tell us, tell us your name, what grade you're in, where you go to school, all that good stuff.
My name is Nolan, and I go to, and I'm in third grade, and I go to Michigan Avenue, and...
What do you want to be when you grow up?
A police officer?
Okay, a police officer. Okay, very good. All right. Have you learned anything today, in serving as the Director of Schools today? No?
Wait, no, wait, no, I don't know. I don't know.
You don't know? Well, has Dr. Cash at least bought your lunch today?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for being here today, Nolan. I know you're excited to get back to school and join.
I'm really not.
Oh, okay. Well, we're glad you're here today, Nolan. Thank you for being, do you have anything you want to share with us today before you sit down? Or I don't know if y'all are staying or what you're going to do?
No.
Okay, all right. Are you looking forward to school being out?
Yes.
Okay. How many more days? Eight and a half if you're counting, I think.
Eight and a half?
I think it's eight and a half. Yeah, it's almost over. All right, thank you for being here today, Nolan.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I wish to recognize Corinne Freeman from the Caring Place. She's going to give us an update on how they have spent their ARP funds that they were awarded last year. Thank you for being here today, Corinne.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Slater, and fellow commissioners, and Mayor Davis for allowing me the opportunity to share with you our award that we received in twenty twenty-two for the American Rescue Plan funding for housing instability. I'm very thankful for your trust and your partnership to serve our neighbors who are experiencing housing instability, either through lack of shelter or financial insecurity. And these funds really did make a difference in addressing the gaps of housing in our community. It helped to not only serve the individuals, but the community as a whole, and I'll share a little bit about that as well. But on behalf of the Caring Place and our neighbors, thank you. Thank you for your partnership. All funds were received and expended by December twenty twenty-two as agreed. And that final report was submitted to the Southeast Tennessee Development District, and they've reviewed that and cleared all of that. We used seven, seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-six to assist neighbors with homeless prevention. So that's rent assistance to prevent homelessness, which is really the most, the best practice way of addressing housing instability is to try to keep folks housed. Eleven thousand one hundred and four dollars were provided for rapid rehousing. That means that we use those funds to help neighbors move from homelessness to housing. And then the remaining ten thousand was used to purchase food from local suppliers in the Chattanooga Area Food Bank, which offset some costs that were dramatically increased from the COVID-nineteen pandemic with the resulting inflation. We provided assistance to eighty-four unduplicated households, but we provided support and housing case management to four hundred and ninety-nine. And I wanted to note that difference because those funds, that four hundred and ninety-nine households, while they may not have received direct financial assistance, and our agency didn't necessarily bill for that time, that still allowed the opportunity for us to connect to those neighbors and potentially connect them to other resources that were better suited for their situation and/or just provide them with stability planning so that they could address their concerns. That did not include families that were served through other programs that we offered, such as the Housing United Program, which is in collaboration with United Way. And that's a, Housing United is a United Way program we provide the case management through. And the average cost of assistance was about one thousand seventy-one dollars for each of those individuals. Now, the more important part that I wanted to share, though, is that ninety-five percent of the individuals that we helped remained housed for six months or longer. So, and that's huge. To be able to retain that housing makes a significant difference. And the reason for that significant difference is that because it saves taxpayers money. Every time that we're able to help one of our neighbors to achieve housing stability, then that means that our whole community actually benefits. For each one of those neighbors, it's a savings about the National Council, National Interagency Council on Homelessness estimates about a savings of thirty thousand dollars per neighbor that we're able to assist. And so our community through our neighbors removing from homeless to housed, that was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars return on investment for those funds. That was how much we were able to save the community. And it also allowed, because you were able to help us to kind of bridge that gap in some funding that came through for housing, because of that, it gave a continuation of services. And that allowed the Caring Place to be poised in a competitive place to apply for some more funding from the THDA, the Tennessee Housing Development Agency. And through that, we were honored to be one of only seventeen agencies chosen in the state of Tennessee to be awarded for emergency eviction prevention funds for those who are low income or very low income. It's a lot more restricted, but it is there. And then we were also only one of three agencies in East Tennessee, one of eight in the entire state, that was able to receive Tennessee Home ARP Supportive Services Grant. Those two grants together total eighty, eight hundred thousand dollars that our community will have access to to continue to address homelessness and housing in our community. So I want to thank you because your decision to use these funds last year to invest in strengthening the continuum of care with our agency, along with some other wonderful agencies and partners, has really moved us closer to a community that can see an end to homelessness. I truly believe that that's possible. We've seen it work. We know that that happens. And if we continue to work together and to collaborate effectively and invest wisely in services that help increase resources and opportunities for our neighbors, we can see that here in Bradley County. So thank you so much for your investment, your partnership, and your time. Thank you.
Do we have any comments, questions? Commissioner Gilbert?
So when you, when you're able to help the homeless like that, what, what does that look like? How do you go about doing that?
So it's, I'll try to be as brief as possible in that, Commissioner Gilbert, because it is a long journey with, in some cases, but it starts primarily with outreach, with connection. So we want to connect to somebody who is experiencing homelessness, and then we want to invite them to participate in that process, to connect to resources. We do operate on what is called a housing-first model. That is the evidence-based practice that is endorsed by all levels of government and social services agencies as the most proven effective model. And what that means is, is that we don't expect you to do a lot of hoops before we house you. We want to house you so that then you can work towards stability because it's really hard to worry about securing and maintaining employment if you don't have a place to consistently shower every day. You don't have a place to consistently go to bed at night. What if you get a second shift job? And, you know, our community shelter does a wonderful job, but that doesn't always work with their scheduling to have those types of employment. So we try to house first, and then we work on intensive case management services. That means that we're visiting with them on a very regular basis. We're talking about stability planning. We're providing professional case management services to say, okay, let's look at budgeting, let's look at employment, let's look at these kind of things so that we can really start moving forward. Because the goal is, is that we want you to become housed. We want you to move to be able to take care of and be responsible for your housing on your own consistently. And then we want you to be able to transition to being, continuing to be a wonderful and valued part of our community and be a thriving member of that to give back.
I've been studying a little bit about homeless and stuff, and watching some videos of different counties and different states and stuff, and I'd really like to get with you and talk.
Absolutely. So I welcome anybody to come and I'm happy to give a tour at the Caring Place to talk more about the services, so absolutely.
Thanks.
Mr. Ledford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, ma'am, y'all are building a building over in front of the Justice Center. How far are you to completion of that building?
So the projected construction of that facility is slated for next spring. So, and none of the funding, of course, was utilized for that construction. But that project will allow us to both continue our services as we're providing now, and then also to expand those case management and supportive services for those experiencing a lack of housing. And so, but that project is slated for next year. The fundraising for that is about halfway through. Inflation continues to be my, but we're working on that.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. We thoroughly appreciate the work here today.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could just add, Corinne, thank you for the job you do, for spending that money wisely. I wasn't going to ask you anything, but we appreciate the job you do. And you are making progress on the new home now. It's starting to look good out there. We're happy for you, so thank you for everything.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Commissioner Goins? Commissioner Thompson?
Ford's all right.
Commissioner Gilbert?
Yes, I went to Bradley High School in Walker Valley's graduation. And Candice Belt, you done an amazing job. And Patrick Spangler is amazing. We've got some leadership in our high schools that is absolutely phenomenal. And I just want to thank everybody for the jobs they do. And I went to Cleveland High Schools, and man, they graduated a bunch of kids, too. So thank y'all for watching, too. That's it for me.
All right. Commissioner Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm actually wearing a tie and a sport coat today because of Mother's Day. We have great mothers in Bradley County. The strength in our community lies in the ladies that are here that have families. And I don't know how many of you fellow members have mothers that you think are the best that there ever could be. I do. And I think I could, you could raise hands, that we would not be the men that we are today with our mothers. And there are many single mothers. They're taking care of kids, taking care of their careers, their jobs, doing all the things out there. We're very blessed to have mothers. My mother always told me, when I went out the door, to just remember who you are. That's all she had to say to me. And every, every day, my mom talks to me, my dad talks to me sometimes. My dad's a little more aggressive to me than my mother. But there are things that we have learned as men from our mothers, and it's made us better people. My dad dealt a lot with my brain. My mother dealt a lot with my heart. To look, look at people, look them in the eye, tell them they're important to you. Spend time with people, don't just look at them. So I learned a lot from my mom. But I want to, I figured I'd wear a tie. I don't usually wear a tie to these meetings unless I just have to. There are times I have to wear a tie, but today I'm doing that in honor of my mother. And for you that had a chance to hug on yours, for those that are looking and listening, if you didn't get to see your mother, you need to do that this week. Mine's been gone six, seven, almost seven years now, and I remember her every day. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Blake?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Echo Commissioner Winters' comments on moms. I had a chance, waited till last evening, last night, to call her, and I interrupted her bingo game, but I did talk to her for a few minutes and tell her that I love her and I appreciate everything she did. Mr. Chairman, prior fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget preparation calendar today is schools, the Bradley County Schools budget hearing. Dr. Linda Cash and Finance Director Susan Wilcutt will go through their budget requests and invite any of you to ask any questions if you would recognize her.
Certainly. Commissioner, Susan?
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to present our budget today. Happy, of course, to tell you that we have presented you with a balanced budget. I believe those documents made it to the mayor's office last Thursday after the board approved it on Wednesday afternoon. And most of you have already seen this presentation at least once, possibly twice. So I was asked to just hit the high points of what we actually are projecting in this budget. So let me get to the right slide, and we will get started. So these are our major highlights that take up the most money out of this budget. So these are our major, um, highlights that take up the most money out of this budget. Um, I think I went too far. So we are funding step raises. That's costing approximately six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We're funding a four percent across-the-board raise for all salaried employees. That costs approximately two point five million dollars. And then we were asked to match or exceed surrounding district scales. And that costs an additional three point three million dollars. So we pulled all of these out into one screen that, so that we could let you know that these are for the employees that are currently on our pay scale. These are not additional positions. We will cover that on the next slide. But we wanted to let our employees especially know, and of course this commission, that we have budgeted about six point four three million dollars to increase our salary scales. Also, you've been hearing me talk for about three years, um, about all the ESER money that we were able to transfer several of our positions over to ESER. And they were legitimately able to be covered in that so that we could take that money and do some other things at the school system. Primarily capital projects, um, maintenance, that type of thing at our schools. We knew there was a day coming that those would have to come back, at least a lot of them. And thank goodness for TESA funding coming in, because one of the things that they've told us is their goal is, is to kind of sustain a lot of the things that ESER was providing for. So, uh, we were actually directed by the state, a couple of different things. They wanted salaries up. And they also wanted to be able to sustain a lot of this learning loss and acceleration goals that was caused from COVID. So we had about eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars come back from ESER. We had to pick up IDEA positions, approximately three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. We are projecting new position growth, uh, in ADM, ADM numbers and learning loss acceleration goals. Again, that's TESA recommendations. That's approximately going to take up one point two three million dollars. And then because we expect our Pi Center to be fully operational next year, um, there's about four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars added for positions there. Other highlights are that we're funding a six percent health insurance increase. This has not been voted on yet. It will be voted on later in May, but this is what we are projecting. That will cost the system an additional seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We've added a hundred thousand dollars to be sent to our schools. We already did this. Um, but it helps them cover copy machines, maintenance and repairs at the school level. And we actually added a hundred thousand dollars to that. Um, we have allotted five hundred and eighty thousand dollars for our new bus contract. And then another thing that had to come back from ESER is one of our computer, uh, school platforms, which is called Edge Annuity. And that's at our virtual school. That's a hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars. We are also, uh, allotting eight hundred thousand for our first year of technology refresh since we got the one-to-one initiative. So we are actually projecting, um, like a phase in of that. Um, I think that Scott Webb may have provided that to the Education Committee. He actually has it, I think, on a five-year rotation. So this will be the first rotation of that. We are also funding over four million dollars for capital outlay. And that includes building improvements for our buildings and grounds of one point six seven million. We are allotting two hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred dollars for transportation and technology. There's an undesignated line item which we allot to our maintenance supervisor for dealing with unknown repairs and maintenance during the year. That's a hundred and eighteen thousand, one sixty-eight. Uh, we include our Bank of America energy payment of four hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars. And then there are safety upgrades that amount to one million, six hundred and five thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars. The complete capital outlay list has been vetted by both our school principals and the Capital Outlay Committee. And that recommendation is included in the budget you just saw the highlights on. And I, I'm through with the highlights, but I will, um, go ahead and cover this because I usually do get questions about the fund balance. Um, the undesignated fund balance is currently around six point five percent. We anticipate after our year-end roll to increase that to approximately nine point two percent, which equates to nine million, four hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. Um, and I will stop right there and try to field any questions or concerns that you have about the budget.
Any? Question?
Yeah, real quick, Susan. Uh, uh, after our education committee meeting the other day, I chatted with, uh, Sheriff Lawson. Is the Pi Center considered one or two schools? Or do you?
Well, there, okay.
Because of the SRO money.
So the Pi Center has been, um, given a school number, and that's basically for our work-based learning programs. But then we also have GOAL and Virtual that are located over there. So it's kind of a dual answer. There are three schools that are housed at the Pi Center, but Pi in itself is also a school.
The reason I ask is, I guess the SRO money is per school and that's what, uh, you and I were chatting about, but we'll get that. Um, I want to highlight one of the things is, that's like, is the one point six million dollars that they're allocating for security of our schools or the Bradley County School System. I think that's a very important number for us to all recognize that. That is dedication. That is understanding how important it is to keep our young people safe. Um, I know there's some comments that were made on social media and all that kind of stuff that we're lacking. But I applaud Dr. Cash and you and everybody in the school system for allowing, allocating that kind of, uh, financial backing on the security of the schools. Um, then last, obviously, as we get to this point in our budget process, thank you very much for getting all your amendments to the Finance Committee throughout the year. I appreciate you, she's attended every Finance Committee meeting. And also Ellen, uh, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much for all of your support. Um, the committees that we deal with have been amazing. And really this commission, the support that you give us, we could not do any of this without you guys being so great to work with. Thank you so much. And, and if I could maybe go to the last screen because that brought up a good point. I just, I really have to always thank, uh, uh, that second bullet point. Thank you to this scouting commission, the mayor's office, the trustee's office and assessor's office for working together to support education and being such good stewards of taxpayer money. It really is a team effort and I really appreciate the team I get to work with. Thank you very much.
Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Winters.
Okay.
Um, we have seen and we've been involved in trying to deal with the competition that's attacked, that's a competition against this district. Both several of, again, very much so in education. It's very important that you all have stepped up as you have. Uh, we would be losing many of the cream of our crop of teachers and possibly even administrators without your support. And actually doing the heavy lifting of this. Uh, we've had to deal with other areas. We're looking at how we can do the other competition. But now with other districts doing their thing of raising salaries, raising benefits, y'all have moved to your transportation. That's been a very crazy for y'all, having to get bus drivers and, and contractors for us. And you've done a great job of doing that. You, you've really saved, uh, this, uh, great education system to keep people in place that now can take care of their families better. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, thank you for the great job that you do. I have one question and I'm just, if, out of curiosity, if you can just clarify for me. This Bank of America energy payment, exactly what is that for?
So, uh, and I'm trying to think what year are we in? We're, um, so years ago, about the year that I guess I became, um, Finance Director, I was already working at the central office. But I wasn't really involved in this process. But we, um, we actually replaced all the windows basically across the district. Um, I think it also included a lot of HVAC replacement, um, some kitchen equipment replacement. It was supposed to, when it was started, the goal was that we would save enough money on maintenance, on electricity and that kind of thing to make the payment. And for the first few years, we actually had a company that was tracking that to make sure that that was happening. But it is a long, long-term debt. It actually gets counted, as the mayor loves this, but it actually gets counted on the county debt. Because county schools cannot carry it. But because this is kind of happening statewide, they allow the schools, we pay it. We have to allot the money for it. It's a yearly cost of that amount of money. It's, it's a big, big ticket item for thirty, it's a thirty-year note. But, did you say, twenty thirty-six, that will be paid. But, um, but we are very, I mean, we take that off the top because we never want this county to ever have to pay a dime of that. That is, we feel like it's our debt, whether the Comptroller's Office counts it as our debt or not. And, um, we are very conscious about it.
I think the total was about eighteen million dollars if I'm not mistaken. And it, uh, renovated, upgraded all the older schools in our school system. And gave Prospect and a couple of the others that were sixty years plus in age, gave them new life. And it saved the taxpayers a tremendous amount of money on having to replace a couple of those schools. So I think, uh, it pays for itself. It exceeded the, the savings exceeded the payment, as I understand it, for the first several years.
We tracked it for a few years. We had to pay for that service. So once we kind of felt comfortable that it was doing what it, what it said it would, we, um, cut that service off. We felt like that was money that we didn't have to use. But I will say one thing, I came through this system, um, I'm not sure how old, hopefully it's old. It's older than me. And, um, it was amazing to me when I made visits to the schools after that happened. It was hard for me to tell which schools were the old schools and which were the newer schools because there, there's so many window. It, it just changed the whole facade of most of our schools.
One more question, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mull, was he responsible for, I knew he was our energy conservation officer.
He was the one that negotiated that.
Okay.
Deal. Uh, um, he was our, he's our energy protector. And he was very, very beneficial in that.
Just want to send out a thank you to him because over the years of, of being here for the commission and, you know, getting newly elected in May. Uh, I, I seen that, heard that many, many times as we were here. So I, I want to thank him for the work that he done, the hard work that he done on, on that part of it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mayor.
Thank you, Susan. Um, we did the similar thing with the courthouse and Annex and Justice Center too, Tommy. The energy grant, uh, except that debt's not on the schools. Um, I tried to put it in all together, but they wouldn't accept it. Um, two things. First of all, if you're one of those that's looking, why do they have a fund balance and Gary says it has to be this amount? They get revenue throughout the year. They get the quarterly state BEP or whatever it's called now. So they're not totally dependent on property taxes like we are. Our fund balance has to be much bigger to get us to December and January. So don't let her fund balance percentages skew you in what our fund balance needs to be. Totally different revenue streams. I also want to thank them. They've been fortunate to get the revenue to have balanced budgets. That's great. Anybody that can come to us with all of those improvements and still have a balanced budget, we're all for. But I can assure you, it's not always been that way. I remember years when we had to say, hey, take, not, not these people. It's been many years ago. We'd have to tell the schools, take this budget back. It's not balanced. You're going to have to balance it and bring it back to us. We can't change their budget, but we can tell them to balance it. And we used to have to do that. So that's just to say thank you to this group of people. They're doing a great job and we appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you again.
Okay. We'll go on then to Commissioner Alford.
Uh, Second District's doing well. I was up by Charleston the other day. I, Ms. Laurie, would you ask, uh, HCI Director to look into progress on their basketball and pickleball court? Cause I've been by there several times. I don't see much progress being made. I don't know who's in charge of that now. But we need to check on it, please, would you? Thank you.
I don't want to steal the commissioner's thunder. I've been by there too. Uh, he's very, been very nice, I think. Uh, Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, I see many people from my district here. I'd like to welcome them to the meeting today. I also see the AG or UT AG manager hiding back in the back. Hannah Godson, how is the UT doing? Otherwise I have nothing else to report.
Commissioner Beatty.
Out in the First District, we've been having a lot of problem on Hannah Road with dogs roaming free. And one of them, people out there's dogs has to go see a vet several times. But the sheriff department's been out there and talked to people next door, but they just keep running free. And they was wanting to know if the commission gonna do anything about it. Are they a leash law in Bradley County?
There is a state leash law.
State leash. Uh-huh. I reckon I just talked to them. But then they just keep contacting the sheriff department about that?
I think you contact the sheriff's department and they will take action only if the dog or animal is a threat.
It's on their, uh, twenty-nine, they got twenty-nine acres and the dogs just keep running on them. They've talked to the people about it.
Commissioner Thompson.
Right now, uh, the sheriff's department, you can call them and they'll help any way they can, but they, they let you go real quick if they're not, they're not a dog to pick up.
We're under contract with SBCA. The contract amount is in excess of two hundred thousand dollars a year. But their responsibility is not to go out and pick up dogs that are in violation of the leash law, uh, state leash law. Uh, they will pick them up if they're deemed a threat by the sheriff's department. They'll come out and pick them up and they will accept them. But, uh, it gets down to a point, uh, where do you want your money to go for the taxpayer? We're spending over two hundred thousand now. City spends close to six hundred thousand. So, uh, we, uh, it's an issue that needs to be discussed. I agree.
Okay. Tell them. I'll tell them. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
Could I jump in? I forgot to mention you. He said something about Hannah Goodson reminded me. We appreciate Hannah's helping us out at the Plaza. One of her employees, uh, helped us, I guess, put together a plan on what to do about pruning and not pruning and so forth on the Plaza. Uh, we used to pay a outside firm to do that and they hadn't been doing it too much lately. So we reached out to her office and they were good at helping us put together the plan. So that plan, along with Tim's people, has come a long way and it looks a whole lot better. And we appreciate it, Hannah. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else? We go on down to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Hughes, second. Uh, Commissioner Mason, call the role, please.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
It's twelve in favor and none opposed and two absent.
Thank you. Agenda item A will now go into a public hearing. It's dealing with the resolution to rezone from forestry, agricultural, residential. Army District, the Highway Commercial C-three District property located at twenty-nine, twenty-nine Harrison Pike and identified by Tax Map zero four zero N Group A Partial zero zero five point zero eight. Uh, Commissioner Hughes is our representative on the planning commission. But, uh, I'll open it up for anyone in the audience that is for or against this rezoning. You have an opportunity to speak. Does anyone, right here, please?
Joseph. I live at twenty-nine thirty-three Harrison Pike. The property in front of us has been turned into a junkyard. There are numerous wrecked vehicles. There are portions of vehicle. There's a bus there. There are long trailers. And there's a lot of just dogs. This depreciates our property and those around me. And, uh, it is such an eyesore. So I am totally against the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for or against? Your name, please.
I'm Tammy Seago. And I live on Harris Creek Trail. My pro, I have eighty acres. And I have a, uh, creek that comes through my property. Uh, she's right. This area on Harrison Pike is an eyesore. Uh, it has several, uh, broken down vehicles on it. Uh, and there are a couple other places in that area that are equally as bad. And I have forty acres for sale, I've been trying to sell. And again, this week, when somebody toured the property, they did ask about cleanup on this area of Harrison Pike. They didn't want to buy a property and have the value depreciate when they're putting, plan on putting a nice home on it. So, again, it's probably no sale. But I'm also concerned about when we get flooding in the area. Because at least on my land, that low area is in a flood zone. And I frequently get, uh, debris. That includes filters, off of vehicles, trash bags full of trash that end up floating down the creek and are deposited along the creek bank in, in my field that I'm, pick up frequently out of the fields and take off to the dump. So, uh, that's my, uh, opinion on it. It's, it's just another place that needs some cleanup and work.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Well, we got, uh, on this subject right now.
My name's Phil Harper. I live at twenty-nine sixty Harrison Pike, which is directly across from the junkyard. Has brought my property values down, I have almost fourteen acres there. My home's valued at over four hundred and fifty-six thousand. My real estate owner told me it'd be lucky to get two seventy-five out of it. We have cleaned it up, we keep it clean. But this is an eyesore for anybody going out Harrison Pike that wants to buy a home or build a home out there. One man started, which is next to the junkyard, quit because it is an eyesore. And I don't think it should be there and bring down all of our property values for a junkyard in the middle of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just a little bit of information for the people that are complaining. This property was already in violation of zoning, later it was sent by our former zoning officer. And then, since then, they have asked for the rezoning to this issue, which would allow garages on it. Uh, which would continue the oil filters and so on that's there, it's been done. I think what we are working on it, we're trying our best as far as the zoning side of it. A lot of it depends on what happens today, where we move with it, honestly. But, uh, we're trying, that's all I can say.
Well, this gentleman back here's been standing up, sitting down four or five minutes. Yes, sir.
I'm Daryl Sullivan, the owner of twenty-nine twenty-nine Harrison Pike. Okay, I do not have no problems cleaning the property up. But anybody that's in here knows that oil filters do not float. When you put them in water, we can go buy a brand new and bring buckets in here and set it in, it will sink. So, there's no debris, I think Mr. Hughes is the one that recommended having the water tested and came out. There's nothing coming off my property. Off, I think it's Mr. Powell, came out there, I've got his card. But anyway, came out and checked, it says there's no water, no oil coming from my place to the creek. But I do not mind cleaning it up. It has been wet. And it's just now to say, it's like the property line. I'm waiting on Mr. Tenpenny, then we're going to do Ms. Joseph. Because I've already had it surveyed, because they were saying the building was too close. So, I've been taking care of that, that's southeast. But I do not mind cleaning it up, put a privacy fence and get rid of the wrecked cars. But I just don't want somebody saying, put an oil stuff in it. It's not coming from me. I mean, I don't mind doing all y'all's things, hate it if I hurt. Eyesore. Please don't say that. Crash.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I got a, I got a question.
Do a junkyard, I do transmission. But I did have a truck, my son was turned over, crashed in October.
Commissioner Ledford.
Yes, sir. How long has, uh, this junkyard been there?
I own the place four years.
How long?
Four years. I grew up right beside it. That was my uncle's place. House right beside his.
How long has vehicles, I, I know the property, I see it as I go down that way sometimes. How long is those vehicles, I, I think they're on the left going down, is that correct?
That way.
Going down Harrison Pike. Okay. But how long has, has it been termed junkyard?
It's never been.
Okay.
Never been qualified, it's the only thing I've ever done is transmission.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hughes, you're the representative on, uh, the planning commission. Uh, just, just, just hold this second, let me get, before I get to you, because I want you to summarize all this. Commissioner, go on.
Uh, like, like if it gets approved or not approved, what, what will that entail on, on improved and not improved? How will that?
They have the right to file again for the rezoning.
Okay. Is, is this something that could be done contingent, putting a fence up around it?
Traders for my race car. And the bus does move, yeah, I do have parts in it, does crank and move.
Thompson.
Did, uh, uh, Mr. Hughes, does, uh, planning commission pass this, pass planning?
It failed unanimously. My major concern with the property was putting a business there. There is a fire department that's just up from it. If you, I've lived out in that area my entire life, if you pull off from Hughes Road, which runs right in front of the property, kind of a blind curve, it's hard to see. If you put more traffic on that, I was worried about best room or basically safety. That was my issue with it and the reason I voted against it.
Mr. Chairman, uh, um, what I would like to do, you said you're in the process of getting it cleaned up or somebody is or whatever. Are you process cleaning it up or you doing any improvements on it?
We've hauled a bunch of cars out of there.
Yeah. That, uh, if I could, I'd like to make a substitute motion that we table this thing until, take something.
We don't have a motion yet.
You don't have, don't have a motion yet?
We don't have a motion.
Sir, they've said several, several times this has been a junkyard. Uh, have you realized that your neighbors felt like your property has been a junkyard for this period of time?
My neighbors has not said nothing to me, Miss, see, Miss Whaley, I weigh better all the time.
Yeah.
Never said nothing. Uh, in the newspaper, they said they came to my place and talked to me or called me, nobody has called me like one time. The guy that started the claim, sitting back here, I have no problem, been sitting up beside him all day. Do not have a problem.
He's closer to you now, he's closer to you now.
But I don't have a problem with it. But it's like I said, in October, when the, the plank was there, ground was wet. And I just thought, I did have a heart attack, but that has no.
Was it this, the property you have looked this way when you bought it?
Well, my uncle had it and it used to look a lot worse than that before my aunt.
Yeah.
We're cleaning it up, trying to, you know, straighten it up.
I, I drive that way a lot too, go to, you can go to Chattanooga, go through there. That entire lane, to me, has a lot of cars, a lot of old cars laying out there, rusting out. And I wonder myself, why, what do you, what do you, what do people do with that property? Just let it rot in front of them? Because that's not maybe exactly yours, but some up above you? When you, when you drive through, when you drive through that? And, uh, this is residential area for these folks here, they live there every day. I tell you, as I'm driving through there, I've asked myself, how can these folks live across from some of that going on there? You're saying at this point that you would, you would change all this, but it looks to me like that's been a kind of a continual problem. I'm concerned that the county itself and us here have allowed, I don't know what people do with, with cars in their yard that's been there for twenty years. I don't understand that part. Uh, you can track, you could have it taken off and probably get four hundred dollars or five hundred for somebody selling it for metal. But I've never really understand, in the county where people can live with the cars they've had for the last five, ten years, laying around for other people to see as they drive through. And that's, that's what I'm seeing on Harrison Pike going down through there on that side of the road. So, you just inherited some of that, I'm sure. But I, I, I get what these ladies are saying, what the other gentleman's saying, this is their home where they live.
Yeah, and I understand what the other gentleman said. God damn below me, y'all can't do nothing because it's grandfathered in.
Yeah.
But, no, that's a whole other thing.
Yeah.
I'm just asking, hey, just trying to work a business, I don't mind doing what y'all asked me to, or asked me to do.
Yeah.
I don't mind cleaning it up. But the only thing I do mind is, please, don't be saying I'm putting oil, oil in.
Oh, yeah.
It was in the paper.
Well, I've said it.
Showing that it's coming from my property.
What, what are you going to put on, you going to put a car lot on your property?
No, the only thing I want to do is build transmission.
Transmission to. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hughes, uh, has been the commission's representative on the planning commission. Can you summarize this and hopefully make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, let me go ahead and just make a motion, I think you've heard enough from me already and everyone else. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, this resolution is to rezone from forestry, agriculture, residential, or F A R district to Highway Commercial C three district property located at twenty-nine twenty-nine Harrison Pike and identified by tax map zero four zero N group A parcel zero zero five zero eight. Uh, you can see these on pages fifty-one through fifty-two, and I put that in form of motion.
Form of motion to approve or disapprove?
Uh, motion's there, just to go up some hours.
Or do I have a second?
What was the motion? Follow the committee?
I do, it's, it's made in form of motion.
Yes, please.
I, I'm going to try to help you guys a little bit. This, this one's done a little unusual because with zoning requests, you are legally obligated to vote them up or down. Um, so, we've had some issues in the past, the planning commission did not recommend approval. But you all do have to take action to either approve the rezoning or to deny it. So, the reason why, um, Commissioner Hughes is putting it on the agenda is because you all have to vote it up or down. So, um, I'm, just to clarify why it's being done this way and what you have to do. We've done it before as a negative and that gets confusing as well. So, basically, if you vote for this resolution, you would be approving the rezoning. If you vote against it, you would be approving it to be denied. So, it, it needs to happen this way so that you vote it up or down.
I, I second the nomination.
It's the motion.
All right, we've got a first and a second. And what we're doing is like the county attorney just said, if you vote yes on it, you are approving it. If you vote no, you are denying it. Does anybody have any question on that?
We're, we're approving what?
We're approving the rezoning of this property. If we vote yes, we are disapproving it, if we vote no. Okay.
I have one question, sorry. If we don't approve this, does that mean he can't run his business anymore?
It means that he can request another rezoning.
Please start over.
It starts over, basically.
Reszoning.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, sir.
Everybody know that, I ain't going to sit here and be quiet about it. I was the one that filed a complaint, uh. We've already got one real bad place up there, as far as I know, it's been grandfathered in.
I don't understand that.
Uh, sixty or seventy cars sitting there for years. But I was the one who filed a complaint about the junkyard.
Thank you. Commissioner Gilbert, you have a comment?
Hey, sir. So, when we vote this yes or no, if we vote it down, it means that you get to go apply again, right? Is that right? So, what if we, if we was to vote, is that right?
There would need to be a change of circumstance. Um, if you vote it down, what would happen is he is confined to the zoning, which is F A R, which is the current zoning. So, to the extent he's in violation of F A R, he will continue to get notices and will, will have issues with the planning office and zoning office about his use of the property. He will have to use the property consistent with F A R.
So, if you go back and clean it up to your neighbor's liking and make it a nice business?
Oh, that's the reason we're trying to, uh,
You can, and get it prepared, then you can come back, right?
Come back to the planning.
And we're trying to get cleaned up. And if the planning committee were to do it, we're trying to put a nice forty by sixty garage up, that way everything will be pretty much inside.
Before we call the roll, I want to say one more time, if you vote yes, you are approving it. If you vote no, you are disapproving it, is this correct? Commissioner Hughes.
One last reminder, the rec, the planning commission did recommend not to approve this.
Right. Uh, call the roll, please.
Beatty.
No.
Hughes.
No.
Alford.
No.
Cry.
No.
Blake.
No.
Gilbert.
No.
Thompson.
No.
Goins.
No.
Slater.
No.
Mason.
No.
Ledford.
No.
Winters.
No.
That's none in favor, twelve opposed and two absent.
Thank you. Uh, we're now out of the public hearing. Back to business, communication from the audience, the lady sitting there had something to say, please.
My name is, uh, Mary Thompson. And I know that this is the Lord's house and that the Lord's got his hand in each house of his. And I was wanting to say, since y'all mentioned the repair of the courthouse at the front steps, the left banister is loose, because I like the fell going down the front steps on, on the left side. And I also want to speak about Cleveland Utilities Water Supplies. I hadn't spoke with them, I hadn't had a chance to speak with them. But they have mold in their water, they have mildew in their water. I had seen it on TV, but I had a glass of water, a sardine, and I just could not drink it. And my dog would not drink it. And I'm going to speak with them, you know, I'm just letting y'all know since I'm here. And I also wanted to, uh, let y'all know about the, um, uh, the, um, the, uh, the, uh, band, the contraband, the contraband that is on the internet, like Amazon. There is keys that could open anybody's door and go in their house and steal their property. There is also keys to the, to the car, to open people's car doors and start the ignition. And I hadn't seen half, you know, I hadn't seen half of the stuff because I hadn't really searched. I happened to see those two things, the keys to the car and the keys to the door. Because I'm suffering with a major problem at my home with a neighbor that has just about cleaned my house out. And, and, and I've got to take care of that issue. And, uh, people are using this device from China. It is called ultrasonic wave device, that it can come into any building and it can spy. And it can get your bill phone, it can get your ID, it can get the business ID, it can get the business information like in the government offices or in any place. And it can also shut down the devices, like computers and, and, and it can cause all trouble. It can tear up and going into the homes, people's homes, uh, being able to see.
It can tear up and going into the homes, people's homes, uh, being able to see people's naked bodies and, you know, just what you do in your home every day. And I mean, it just, it just takes your freedom from you. And, and, and I'm, I'm experiencing that. I have been everywhere trying to get help and I understand it better. I mean, it needs to be done away. It is China's product that is here in the United States. It's been available on the market for six years. And I know of an individual, it's all the way from another town, which is in the state of Texas. He's here in Cleveland, Tennessee, that he has run out with his scamming. And he's here in Cleveland, Tennessee to find that information and to go and rob people in Cleveland, Tennessee. It can go in any building. And, and a person traveling and stuff. I worked at McDonald's and up at Charleston, Tennessee. And it, and these two people, these two scam artists, which I didn't really know about one of them until I heard the other day, that come into my home and stole all of my ID out of my bill phone, stole my tablet, uh, stole my cell phone and I have no ID. And, and it kept stealing, kept stealing my bank information, my social security number. And, and it's even made the bank really upset and everything about the situation, which I can't blame them, not at all. I got fired from my job at McDonald's. The, the man, the owner did not directly tell me that I was fired. He told me that, hey, that, you know, he just told me in a kind way that, hey, I had to, I had to go from there. You know what I'm saying? Because fast as he was getting the equipment fixed in there, as fast as one, uh, one technician come out the door, by the time he does, another technician has to come in the door. And it was just nonstop. That Coke fountains for lunch, down and everything. The cash register drawer open and, and missed ninety dollars out of the cash register, cash register drawer. And, and, and people's bill phones missing. And they are robbing people with this ultrasonic wave device machine that is spiritual warfare. It's been fought in the air. And, and I, you know, and I would go, I would go to the Senate. I would go to Governor Lee. But, hey, they, these people do not answer their phones no more. They do not have secretaries answering their phones anymore. They are not able to return their calls, I don't guess. But I'm gonna keep on, I'm gonna keep on pushing this. I am not giving up here. Because, hey, it, it just destroys your livelihood. It takes your livelihood away from you. And then it, 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 they can put this machine inside of your body and just beat your body and just stick your body with pins and everything.
Your, your five minutes are up. Do you desire?
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Do I have? Yes, sir. Please, sir, come up, give your, please come up to the speaker.
Have that lady stay here. You know, stay with her, give her her name and number.
Clarify what this lady's talking about. It's the other night on the government thing, I've been in electronics. I'm eighty years old and spent my full life in military. What she's talking about, and the government had a big program on the TV the other night, if anybody watched it, about artificial intelligence. It is a big thing of our government now. Let you all know something. You can be on your phone for ten minutes, ten seconds. If artificial intelligence is there, they've got everything you have in your wallet on their thing. It does take but five to ten seconds to take every bit of your information under artificial intelligence.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here to speak? Yes, sir, come on up, Doug.
I would just like to, uh.
It's, it's working.
That wasn't really what I came up here for.
Drop it after you speak.
Don't think I'm quite at the mic drop point. Just like to remind all of you that Formulated Solutions Grand Opening Celebration is tomorrow at eleven AM. And I know that we've sent all of you a notice, but we would hope that you can join us for that celebration. They're one of our new additions to the community.
Thank you very much. That's the old Dr. Scholes building for you old timers out here on Michigan Avenue. Anyone else care to speak? All right, announcements, uh, I don't see it on here, but we have a road committee meeting coming up what day? Tim? That's on page two? Solid Waste Formulated Solutions? No, I don't.
That's the thirtieth in it.
All right, anyway, we'll go down. We've got one and I wanted to remind people that the T-DOT representatives will be here for that road committee meeting to probably address the Walker Valley traffic situation near the high school there.
Chairman, it'll, it'll be, um, May the thirtieth at nine AM here at the commission room. I've invited Dan Howell will be here, representative. And he contacted me Friday, said there would probably be four or five, um, probably representatives from T-DOT here. So any commissioners for sure, y'all are all invited to come in and to the road committee meeting that day.
This has been a ongoing problem since, I know I've been elected. They were supposed to have done some stuff and they put up that flashing light up there at Walker Valley Road and instead of a traffic light. But we had a young lady almost lost her life here about three weeks ago. Uh, they thought she was gone, but she survived. Uh, Formulated Solutions Grand Opening, May the sixteenth, eleven thirty AM till three PM. Forty-two oh seven Michigan Avenue Road Juvenile Court Membership Meeting, May the eighteenth, nine AM, the Avenue Church. Michigan Avenue Road Corridor Plan Open House, May the eighteenth, five PM to seven PM, Cleveland Jetport. Solid Waste Landfill Committee, May the twenty-second noon here in the commission room. Anything else? We're adjourned.